I'd like to call the special meeting of the City Council Public Financing Authority, Housing Authority to order. City Clerk might have the roll call, please.
Councilman Twining?
Here.
Councilman Kennedy?
Here.
Mayor Protem McKeon?
Here.
Mayor Burns?
Here.
Councilwoman Vandermark?
Here.
Councilman Rule?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
All present.
All right, the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand, and it'll be led by City Clerk Lisa Lane.
Please face the flag, right hand over heart, ready, begin.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No. Butch. Butch, thank you. City Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications?
Yes, there are 20 emails received regarding the TAFRA public hearing for the Pelican Harbor Apartments.
All right, do we have anybody to speak for this session? Signed up to speak?
Yes.
Mayor, maybe just remind everyone, the public hearing has been continued from the last meeting, so we're continuing the public hearing and hearing testimony again on the matter.
Okay, as the city attorney had said, the parliamentarian, we are continuing the public hearing from last meeting, and we should restrict comments and stuff towards that, correct?
Correct.
All right. We have--
We're going to continue and do the public speakers during the public hearing.
Okay. Okay, we've continued it, then should we just proceed with the staff report?
If there's an, is there an additional staff report?
No, there's no additional staff report, the same from the last meeting.
Okay.
We're able to answer any questions, though.
All right, and then we shall, let me see, do you have any questions on the report? No report. Okay, we have people signed up to speak, we'll open the public hearing again.
Public hearing was already--
Yeah, it's already open, but we'll resume it. Individuals wishing to provide comment on this item scheduled for public hearing may do so filling out the request form delivered to the city clerk. All speakers are encouraged, but not required to identify themselves by name. Each speaker may have a minute unless they're, the volume of speakers warrants reducing the time allowance. So you can start calling the public speakers.
Dave Reinerson, me, Sean Roslius, Father Nathan Bornstad, Janet DePorto, Marsha Maddox, Kathy Ryder, Pat Goodman, Joel Bros, Pab Aspas, Michelle Kearns.
First speaker.
It's often said that if you want to know a person's true character, do not listen to what they say, watch what they do. This city council majority has voted to give millions of dollars to Pacific Airshow, waived hundreds of thousands of dollars of city services for the airshow, paid over a half million dollars for environmental impact report for the airshow. They voted to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages at the city sports complex. They voted to contract with financially questionable promoter to put on a light show in Central Park despite furious opposition from the public. They directed the police department to collaborate with ICE, and now they are considering withdrawing support for affordable housing for seniors, many of whom are disabled, rather than honor the commitments made by their predecessors. They all profess to be Christian. From what I read, Christ told people to care for the least among us, to befriend the stranger, and to be compassionate for those who have fallen on hard times. When I look at this council majority's actions, I think their actions say something very quite different from what they profess.
Next speaker.
Hello, friends, my name is Sean, I'm a longtime resident and a former city council candidate way back in 2010. Let me start out by saying yes on Prop 50. So after wasting a lot of money trying to cheat the public out of a library, your gross deal with the airshow, your refusal to take our budget shortfall seriously, et cetera, now you're telling us that your idea of serious leadership and authority is to shake down an affordable housing center for fixed income seniors. This is really gross. It was also extremely unfortunate that I can barely be shocked at the idea that you would choose to get tough with probably the most defenseless and precarious demographic in the city that you are sworn to protect. After you guys specifically wasted so much money on political games and personal frauds, I just can't shake the feeling that if this company was better acquainted with your personal campaign committees, this may have gone better for them. Thank you.
At the last meeting, I heard three council members drone on about taxpayer money being used to house seniors in a project that was deemed unprofitable to the private sector and remained vacant and blight and blight for many years. Taxpayer funds, Huntington Beach taxpayer funds, were used to pay for an environmental impact report for the Pacific Airshow at the tune of $617,000. Taxpayer money was used to pay for the Public Works Department to prep before, work during, and clean up after the airshow, along with the salaries of our code enforcement officers, our police officers, our firefighters, and our marine safety officers, and even more staff was used within City Hall, all paid with taxpayer monies. Revenue we would get from our parking lots is given to the Pacific Airshow. We have yet to see the benefits and the actual dollar amount the city receives for subsidizing the Pacific Airshow, put on by Kevin Elliott with Code Four. Numbers have been thrown around about for years, but an actual dollar amount, comparing what our taxpayer money is putting out there with what comes in, has yet to be done.
Next speaker.
Hi, I'm Father Nathan Bjornstodt at St. Wilfred's Episcopal Church, and I'm here to speak in favor of giving tax-exempt bonds to the Pelican Project. My hope is, is that each of you will look at the good that this project provides, the housing that's provided for those who struggle, you know, otherwise to provide housing, and so my hope is that you will extend these tax-exempt status and to do so quickly, so thank you.
Good afternoon, Kathy Ryder, Huntington Beach homeowner and voter since 1985. A special call meeting at 4:00 PM is a clear indicator that this council is not really interested in hearing from the residents in Huntington Beach, because if this issue is so important that it's a public hearing, shouldn't every effort be made to include the public at a time when more could attend? And if this does not pass, what exactly is your plan for the 46 senior citizens who will depend on this project for a place to live? Your disdain for the welfare of our senior citizens is unbecoming of public servants, and you certainly can do a better job prepping for your meetings. I read the materials, do you? You should trust your staff, our residents deserve better.
Next speaker.
Mayor Burns, City Council, this is more of a message to my fellow Huntington Beach voters. Last week exposed a deep misunderstanding about the city council's responsibility to meet the housing needs of its residents. Pelican Harbor is a success story, a well-designed, well-located community for low-income seniors and residents with disabilities. It shows how thoughtful locally-guided development can provide dignity and stability for those who need it most. Just about every city council candidate I've ever heard run on a slogan, "No High-Density Development." It doesn't matter what party they're with, it's a stance, though, that conflicts with the council's legal and moral duty to plan for housing. Since 1969, my understanding is cities have been required through RENA to build homes for all income levels, yet the low and very low income goals are rarely met. Thank--
Next speaker.
My name is Pablo Aspas, and I'm a Huntington Beach resident. I'm here to support the resolution in favor of the low-income residents. In recent months, I've heard, I've heard our city council members, "How much you love America," all this blah, 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 "How much you love Americans," but last week I saw a lack of generosity and protection of our elders, especially in Mr. Kennedy, Mr. Burns, and Mr. Williams. We are talking about people who need help. Mr. Burns mentioned that we need money for the police department or fixing a hole in the road. As a taxpayer, I can live with a hole in the road, but if 43 people in our community need a house to live, I'm for that. So today, you can prove that you care about people by approving this resolution. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Yeah, hello, my name is Joel Bros. I moved into my brother's house in 2014 in Huntington Beach, and I lived there until 2019, until he got sick and he died. I had to move out of his house, I was on a low fixed income, I was 73 years old. I was homeless, I went into the program during the COVID environment thing, and I was put in the wrong program by the police department. I should have received the Tenet Base Section 8 Housing Vouchok to all the people. I'm 78 years old and a small fixed income, and I'm still insulted by Stephanie Garcia, who says I have no ties to Huntington Beach. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hi, I'm Michelle Kearns, I'm a 25-year city resident and homeowner. I'm also part of the Jesus Project HB that houses seniors who've been homeless that have ties to Huntington Beach. Many of them are now housed at the Jamboree Pelican Harbor. I also am an alumni from Jamboree, worked there for quite a while and managed three properties. They are the Nordstrom of affordable housing, okay? The state of Sacramento would not approve them, as they do, if they were not doing things right legally, ethically, and to the most cost-efficient dollar that you could possibly get to. So I understand having questions about bond timing, I understand every question that you've had, but I know you have good hearts because you were put here by the Almighty, and so I'm here to just say I'm in support of it. I know that we had some issues with COVID, but you know what, we're here now, right? The building is here now, the people are here in the, in the complex, and it's doing a good thing. The churches are all partnered with--
Next speaker.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No more speakers.
No more speakers? All right. All right, the public hearing is now closed, council discussion. I've given this a lot of thought myself, and I'm still trying to, and I want to, understand how this, the place is built, it's there, and now we're supposed to somehow coordinate and repair some mistakes that the Jamboree has made in their timing of their bonds. And I'm, I still, after two meetings with January, this, I mean, Jamboree this last week, I'm still not entirely convinced that they need our signatures, but I'm still open, I want to hear discussion, on how this is supposed to help the citizens of Huntington Beach and the, really, the government of Huntington Beach. Try to be responsible, try to be ethical and compassionate, too, but this is a business, and every council meeting, we get people coming up here and telling us that we're fiscal knuckleheads and that we need to pay attention and take care of our infrastructure. But if we keep on granting these kind of jobs, I worry that our, our whole system will collapse at some point at, in a socialist-type form of taking care of so many people, and it worries me. It's, but I'm, I'll open this up for discussion. Done?
Thanks, Mayor. What I'd like to do first, before I ask staff some questions, is just kind of give a rundown for the public who may not be aware how these projects come to fruition. So there's a $20 million tax-exempt bond issued by CMFA. There's a 15-year tax credit period that is awarded to the developer at $1.5 million per year, over 10 years, that they're able to speed up and liquidate at basically 90, 85 to 90% on the dollar. So they take that $13.6 million tax credit, and they use that to pay down the debt that's come from public funds. From there, what happens is, the sweet spot for the developer is really year 15, and that's the year where the tax credits have now expired, so the US bank, who was the buyer of the tax credits, basically will then have the ability to sell the asset, not back to the city, but to the developer for a nominal fee of as low as $1. So there is that aspect of it. There would still be some debt on the, the project, but current NOI on the project is $314,000 a year, there will be CPI increases, so by the time they take that asset free and clear, well, not free and clear, but with minimal debt, because there's an additional NOI, they've now inherited a project that's probably going to be worth 30, 35 million, I think the construction estimation is 35 million, but whatever the case may be, for a nominal fee of a dollar. In addition to that, they'll have the NOI, the net operating income, to service the debt and continue to build some profitability that they can put into their fund. Beyond that, the tax subsidies are incredible on these projects, I mean, this sounds like the best type of business to be in. The rents are $2,300 a month, and the state subsidizes 2,000 of that, and the tenants pay $300, so it's guaranteed income for the developer that basically really has almost no risk capital. So let me ask you a couple of questions. Staff, are you aware that, or maybe you can let me know, how many affordable homes have we built here in Huntington Beach?
So, well, the city doesn't build housing, but we currently have a portfolio of approximately 3,000 affordable units.
And how does that rank among, let's just say, cities in Orange County, in regards to who has the most affordable housing built?
It's, it's, it's in the top five.
Okay, so we are building affordable housing, in other words, at a rate more than the majority of every city here in--
Irvine's the highest, at like five grand, and we're at 3,000, as Jennifer alluded to.
Okay, and so it's clearly Huntington Beach allows affordable housing, no question about it, so that misnomer's out the door. Was staff aware the fact that Jamboree, the developer, has the ability to buy the asset in year 15, when the tax credits have expired, for a fee as low as a dollar? Are you aware of that?
No.
Okay, well, Mr. Massey, he was the one that actually substantiated that, so it's a fact. So they're not going broke, and also, do you realize, staff, when we're negotiating, or you guys were, this was never brought before the majority of the council, maybe there was some, some negotiation or some consideration, but when we add an additional 39 years, are you guys aware of the tax loss resulting in a burden for 39 years additionally? So basically 100 years without property tax, were you guys aware of that? Was it factored in at all?
Yeah, I mean, so we know that affordable housing is tax, property tax exempt, so extending affordability would extend that property tax exemption.
Right, so you guys are aware of that. So 60 years is a generous, generous exemption, in my opinion, for a city to go without property tax on one property. You might say, well, it's just one property. Well, let me ask you this, staff, if we were to agree to a 99-year extension on tax-free, or loss of property tax, what do you think the next developer's going to say that wants to come in here and build a tax-exempt affordable housing? Do you think they may ask for 99 years as well? You gave it to those guys, we want it too? So we would have the, the compounding of multiples to property tax loss, so if you lose four or five million on this project over the 39 years, times one, times five, times 10, next thing you know, we're talking about, you know, $50 million a year in lost, or $50 million in it as an aggregate, as we continue to compound the multiples of these, these buildings, so did you guys contemplate that?
Well, it depends on the type of project, so a lot of our units come through the inclusionary requirement, meaning the city imposes the affordability restrictions on the project, and the project is not necessarily proposing affordability. In that case, it's a mixed income project market rate with some affordability. The city imposes a 55-year restriction, and generally, they wouldn't ask for additional time, they want to just probably have less time. Now, if it's an affordable housing developer, that could be different, and it would probably depend on what the proposal is at the time.
Right, so once it's granted to one, the next affordable housing builder that's in the same tax-exempt position, why would they not ask for the 99 years? We've given it to one, the expectation is there, what you allow, you encourage.
Well, right now, the affordability is set at 60 years. The 99 years was part of a proposal to request this TAFRA, so it's completely up to the council whether or not the 99 years is granted. We don't know what the next project would propose.
Well, I would imagine if we set a precedent of 99 years, that everybody that follows-- that everybody that follows in their footsteps is going to be asking for the same type of thing. But that's my questions for now. Maybe somebody else.
One thing I just want to, in our discussions with Mr. Massey and Jamboree, it was, I know a big issue was that the seniors would be curbed should we not sign this, that they would get evicted. And he's pretty much assured us that it is very, very unlikely that would occur. That senior, and I know that was a major concern with a lot of people out in the audience and a lot of people up here on the dais. And if not all of us, but he has assured us that is not one of the options that are the priority. So anybody else?
Could we get Mr. Massey maybe to come down and just verify that? And would we be able to ask him some more questions? Mayor?
Yes.
Evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Mike Massey. I'm the chief development officer and executive vice president at Jamboree. I also have our vice president of business development and government relations, Kelsey Brewer, and Pete Mitchell, our consultant, to make sure we're able to answer all of your questions.
All right, so thank you, Mr. Massey. Just to the mayor's point, so my understanding was, after a meeting with you yesterday, that no seniors are going to get curbed or go to the streets if this TFR doesn't go through. Is that correct?
We anticipate that what would happen if the TFR weren't approved is there would be a gigantic hole in the capital structure. Jamboree has the wherewithal to fund that, and our board has expressed a willingness in the past to do something like that.
Okay, and then just to verify by way of refresher, you know, last week, it really was the first time for, I think, the majority of the council up here that we were hearing anything about this TFR issue. And it's my understanding that you guys have gone through a series of extensions where it had expired in December of 2024, and then at some point later in 2025, you applied for an extension, and that was granted, and then that expired, and you applied for another extension, that was granted, then that expired, and then you applied for another extension, that was granted, and now we're coming up on the deadline, October 31st. So we had one council meeting prior to that deadline, regularly scheduled council meeting, for us to make a decision of whether or not we're going to grant approval to the tax-exempt bonds. Is that correct?
Somewhat. We came here in July, but the city instructed us to renegotiate and get more terms. So it wasn't one council meeting, Councilmember Williams. We were here in July.
Yeah, thank you. And just to my point, was that the majority of the council up here, we weren't a part of those meetings, we weren't aware of those meetings. And so it's not really brought before the city council. Maybe it was something that was being brokered between one or two other council members.
No, the city staff told us to work with your representative from the council on the EDC, and we did. We were just complying with what was asked in good faith.
And then I'm trying to understand why going from sixty years of locking in affordable housing would be something to be considered, you know, a carrot, you know, that this council would want to go for, to then lock in a century, essentially, ninety-nine years of affordable housing, which would really be locking in Section 8 taxpayer subsidized payments as well for a century. And that's on the back of the taxpayer to be paying that. So I don't understand why that was a leverage point or something that was considered to be a deal point in the negotiations?
We have two answers. One is that we were asked to do that, and we were trying to negotiate in good faith, and we did so. Do you have anything else to add, Kelsey?
Yeah, I don't want to speak for city council, and we welcome kind of any direction you want to take on it. But I think one perspective is that it maintains the affordability, which requires the city to potentially have to build less affordable housing because those units remain affordable over the long term.
Okay, and so that would be, I mean, if our goal, our aim was to satisfy the state mandates, and that's what our priority was, this would be one way to satisfy that. If we could just kind of backstep a little bit to kind of get a 30,000-foot view of really just how this project came to be. So my understanding is, is that the location was picked out, and there was a loan that came from the city, approximately $3 million, to be able to get that ground and break ground. And the idea is, is that the payment back on that will start into year sixteen. But once you have the, you know, taxpayer-funded property, then you go out and you look for more funding elsewhere. And that comes in the form of low-income tax credits. So if you're looking for $20 million, you can get a voucher that comes from the feds through the state. It trickles down from HUD, and now you have this $20 million tax credit, just by way of example. And it's like a voucher. It's almost like you're standing outside of a stadium, and somebody's going to go into the game, and they're like, hey, are you going to go buy the ticket? Are you going in? And they're like, yeah, I'm going in. Well, why pay full price when I can give this to you for a discounted price? And so that's kind of like these big companies that they owe $20 million, say, in taxes, you know, but you could take this voucher and say, this is worth $20 million, and I'll give it to you for $18 million. And that's essentially how you get your $18 million. Now you can fund the development of the project. Is that illustration about accurate? I see your head's nodding. Yes?
So it can be. I will tell you, I've been doing real estate development and advocacy for decades. As a background, for many of you that don't know, I was the political director statewide of the California Association of Realtors and the chief consultant for the Building Industry Association. This is a product that people and developers tend to not want to do. It's the least profitable, and as you can tell, we're at a loss. Number two, people look for lucrative, creamy things to do, and this serves, number three, the underserved. And so I took this in the last three and a half, four months because they're a noble company. They have a legendary CEO. She apologized for anything she said inappropriately. And I commend them for stepping up and doing a business model and the product when it's already cost them money.
What was that in reference to? What did she maybe say inappropriately?
She said something that may have offended some of you. So one of the items when we were speaking with the city staff is she apologized. She's not a political person, and sometimes people, when they're sad or they're normal, they may say something that's politically incorrect.
I guess for the benefit of the public? I mean, I wasn't there, so, I mean, what was it that she said?
We were told that she said if it wasn't approved, that she might go to, something I'm paraphrasing, might just deal with a future council or something like that.
Okay.
That's not something I would have said.
And I understand, you know, wanting to help out, you know, the needy, the elderly, the disabled, and that's great, you know, to prop that up. You know, trust but verify, right? And, you know, when I look into this, you know, my understanding is, the way it seems is there's a little bit of profiting going on off of poverty. We've found kind of a gravy train in terms of these subsidies that come down from the state. You know, when we were campaigning, we campaigned on the fact that, look, there's $24 billion that are essentially unaccounted for. We can't figure out really where that went in this state that's supposed to go towards, you know, housing, you know, homeless and needy folks. But these are some of the programs that can apply for this. And so when we're looking at, say, this $20 million voucher that gets sold for, say, $18 million, now you've got the $18 million to do the build, you do the build. And then there's a little bit of remainder left over that you need to finance somehow. That's where the TFR comes in, and that's why we're here. We're looking to finance the remaining 4.8, you know, million dollars, and we want to do it with tax-exempt bonds. Meanwhile, though, these folks are paying a couple, few hundred dollars, you know, in rent, and the lion's share of this rent is being covered by Section 8 funding. And so it seems as though we found a way to sort of convert this trickle-down of this $24 billion that's supposed to be spent on homelessness to then bring about this development from the dirt all the way up, subsidized then further by the Section 8 housing, and turn this into a $3-point-billion enterprise. And that's one of the things that was brought up in the last council meeting is that you guys have amassed $3.2 billion while, you know, top executives are, you know, you say that there's not a lot of margin there, but top executives, I could just look at the top two. Just between the two of them, their salaries amassed to $1.1 million. So it doesn't really feel like this is one of those nonprofits where everyone's kind of suffering and struggling and trying to help out the needy. It seems as though we're taking people that are in poverty. We found a way to sort of hide behind them or use them as shields and profit on the executive side of things.
Yeah, they're not. Number one, they're a very good company that does hundreds of projects around the state and does an underserved product that people will not do generally. Number two, in this case, this project is not profitable, and yet they're still sticking by their word. Number three, when they lined up to do this project many years ago, that was always part of the equation to receive the financing they are. Number four, they're sorry they missed the window, but COVID did wreck a lot of things. Number five, at the last council meeting, it also said that there was better other uses of the project in property taxes, and that's not true. Number six, cities and counties have restricted funds, and they have to use those funds for certain things, not for anything, and they were used properly. What else did we not cover in that? Okay.
It's kind of a cute little summary, but, you know, nevertheless, again.
It's a cute summary. It's answering that with accuracy and respect. It's not cute.
There's funds that might be locked up in a bucket that cannot be spent otherwise, but they do not have to be spent in that particular way.
They, your staff did a good job answering the report. For those of you that don't know development, that they used it appropriately for things and put it to use. So you created jobs, and you house people that are needy. This is an important thing. The larger comments about your arguments with the state, you can have those. That's not us. This is a good company. That's a nonprofit, and it's doing exactly what it's supposed to do.
Would it be accurate to say that the top two are collecting over $1.1 million in compensation just for the year 2023?
I do not know. If I did, everybody knows my reputation. I would disclose it. I do not know what the top two executives make. But if they're doing a good job, I'm assuming their nonprofit board would reward them with bonuses based on tiers. And if they're not, I assume they would get paid very little or be dismissed.
I guess what I don't understand is if margins really are so tight, how is it that we're paying some of these executives over half a million dollars?
Well, it's a good thing you're not paying the executives those money. This project is at a loss, and they're stepping up because others that are more profitable and don't go through some of this laborious process, that they're actually making money and hitting the targets. So I would just ask your kind indulgence to please support the original deal here. You're not giving away money. It's by your own acclamation. Other council did this project. Maybe you wouldn't have, but it's here. They carried the project out in good faith. They've housed people. These are good people in need, and you're not paying for their salaries at all. This is still a loss. They could be much more punitive, and they're not. That's why I joined it. I find them to be a good company with people in very good character.
Their salaries are paid by taxpayer dollars. It's all the people in front of you and behind you and everybody watching right now. Is that not accurate?
I really don't know how to answer that because I think.
Maybe Mr. Mike Massey can answer that. How is it that you guys pay your salaries? I think you mentioned it in the last council meeting, Mr. Mike Massey.
I think if there's a profit, then the board approves the salary, and they generate a check in the accounting department and pay the staff their money.
You're not Mr. Mike Massey. He's asking a question directly. Do you?
So Jamboree has a number of ways of earning revenue. The primary source is through developer fee, which is structured into the capital structure of the development. If we are successful in delivering what we say we're going to over a number of years, we receive a developer fee for taking the risk associated with the development and executing on it.
And so that developer fee is paid by subsidized taxpayer dollars, correct?
The primary components of the capital structure are from public sector funds.
And then the primary capital from paying of the rent is from what?
It varies from project to project. Sometimes it's subsidized through Section 8 vouchers. Sometimes it comes strictly from the residents.
What's the lion's share of it coming from in this particular project?
In this project, the majority of the units have Section 8 vouchers. And the vast majority of the revenue and income that comes from that goes to service the debt that was used to build the building.
So again, it just seems to me that if we want to get a project off the ground, we have a way of getting funding through taxpayers in Huntington Beach. We start that way, then we go out, we get these low-income housing tax credits, and we, you know, print money almost out of thin air, you know, out of that one to taxpayer again. And then we keep it afloat with the Section 8 housing, and somehow we convert, you know, the $24 billion that's going down to the states, it gets converted into a $3.2 billion enterprise where tops executives are making hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars, but hiding behind, you know, elderly, disabled people as human shields and acting like we don't really make much of a margin, and this isn't a racket, even though it might seem like one. That's my take.
Andrew?
I just want to change it up a little bit. So on the plus side, right, I think that it's important that we have this conversation because I think generally speaking, people in California, Southern California, don't realize that so many seniors are actually struggling and are trying to break the cycle of homelessness. So just like outside of all of this, that's important. It's brought up. I mentioned it in the last meeting, 177 unsheltered seniors specifically in Huntington Beach. Now, you mentioned 43, 44 right now are being housed, or perhaps even more. It's just one per unit, right, is it? So one of the questions, and once again, I'm digressing a little bit, and I'll come back to another question. One of the questions I have is that in the process of having this conversation, and which otherwise may have been kind of pushed through consent calendar, we are talking about that. So that's positive because I think people don't realize that. But some of the local residents here in Huntington Beach have asked me, you know, we have this opportunity, and we have seniors that are being housed, but then also, you know, they'll look at things, the optics. They'll say, you know, I drove down the street and I saw somebody else who was living in a camper or who was unhoused. On a go-forward basis with this, what are the opportunities to continue housing any more residents of Huntington Beach who meet the senior standards? Is that part of the kind of the strategic plan for this property?
Yeah, I can take that one. We do have a preference on this development. As we mentioned at the last meeting, over 87% of the residents have a connection to Huntington Beach. That preference does not disappear anytime a resident moves on to a different housing location. So as we replace that unit, that preference will still be in place, and we hope to maintain that same level of focus on Huntington Beach residents over the course of the regulatory agreement.
So the kind of the mechanics of the project, how long do, and once again, I'm just setting the table, so there's more information here. How many, how long do the residents that are currently there, do they move on to subsequent housing throughout the county? Or do they stay there for, is there a certain lease period?
It's a great question. It really does depend on the type of population. I think since we're dealing with disabled seniors, we're going to see this as a lost place that a lot of folks are in before they need a higher level of care. We don't have a way to force people out. Folks do sign a lease, so they have to renew their lease every year with us. But they can stay in the program for as long as they're eligible for the program and can maintain all of the House rules requirements and make the rental commitments as well, too.
And then, so for those people who are watching and understand, and perhaps they need to be able to communicate this to other people, what's the process and the procedure by which somebody who is either perhaps on the verge of suffering, being unhoused, being unsheltered, or somebody who is currently in that situation to go through either the application process or how can, or is it city resources?
The city of Huntington Beach has done an excellent job on homelessness outreach. You heard from some speakers today that residents that they had worked with on those projects have ended up in Pelican Harbor, or Pelican Harbor. So what I would say to anybody that's watching this, has a relative, a friend, somebody that they pass at the grocery store, it's first connecting folks to those homelessness services so that we can do immediate interventions. And then you'll be placed on a list and become eligible for housing at Pelican Harbor if and when units are available.
So there is kind of a waiting list that exists right now?
We don't necessarily maintain an ongoing waiting list because these are referred to the development through the coordinated entry system. So you, once you are connected with homelessness services, whether it's through interactions with your police department, interactions with nonprofits on the street, you're assessed for your compatibility with permanent supportive housing. And then depending on a variety of factors, on this particular project, there's a need for a disability of some sort. You're then matched to that housing opportunity there at Pelican Harbor.
And then within Jamboree, how much of your portfolio is senior housing versus just generally affordable?
I am not the math person, but we have about 3,000 units of senior housing out of about 11,000 units throughout the state.
Do you think that that's, is that going up?
I hope it can. There's not a lot of funding available specifically to address senior affordability or senior homelessness, but it is one of the fastest-growing populations that we see in homelessness.
And there was one.
The state not having dollars, we're struggling with finding sites where real estate costs are through the roof. We're struggling with time and permits and cleanup and processes always. It's a challenge to get anything built.
One of the speakers, I think her name was Michelle, she had mentioned that she works outside with the church organization. So in the event that there were residents living at Pelican Harbor who were unable to pay the monthly rent or the fees, is that where some of these outside services, churches, who does cover that in the event? Where does that money come from?
Yeah, I can address that. As Councilmember Williams pointed out, most of these units, especially the homeless, disabled units, are covered by vouchers. So that rent is paid through, mostly through the voucher, and then the resident pays a small remainder. As Pete's mentioned, we're a nonprofit, which means that all the money that we make goes back into the developments. And so one of the things that we self-support is an emergency rental assistance fund if and when residents run into those issues. We find, generally speaking, at our senior properties, it's not an issue because most folks are connected to some sort of social security benefit that they can utilize for their rent.
So then, Sue, if the project was cash flowing, that would go into an emergency fund that then would be used in the form of. fund that then would be used in, in the event that somebody was, was unable to pay their rent?
The emergency fund's separate from the cash flow of the development. It's something that we fund through our corporate.
Oh, okay. Oh, so you have that separately. And you're not managing the property, right? You mentioned, I think, last time it was another group that was managing it.
Third-party property manager, QMG, who's the onsite property management, they do the staffing and all of the maintenance and then we oversee from an asset management perspective.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I mean, my goal was really just to kind of like fill in some of these blanks here so that everybody understands the, the entire nature of the project. We've obviously, like, we can't go back and relitigate the decision-making process that was put in place in 2020 or 2021. I think that administratively, we're faced with a, you know, a, a question that's specific to the extension of the California Municipal Finance Authority's tax-exempt status. You know, I don't necessarily look at this as, once again, I'm looking at it through the filter of 43 people, the majority of which are Huntington Beach residents who are unhoused, unsheltered. We know the number's 177 who are put in a place in, and I know that perhaps Casey's going to allude to this from the developer side, that this property is undevelopable, I guess, from, from the commercial sector, right? Jennifer, would you agree with that? That, that there's not people knocking down the door for this property to put a big lots in?
Yeah, I mean, from the, for a commercial development, I don't think we had any proposals since I've been with the city since 2006. We did have three residential proposals. Two never came in for an application. It was just preliminary and then one was denied.
Okay. So I think, you know, kind of my overall message though, from having this conversation is, is that if there are people who are watching this and there are Huntington Beach residents who fall within the framework of senior disabled residents, and I know that you said they're at full occupancy, but I think that we do need to encourage people to go through and utilize these resources because if we have them here and we're making a difficult decision, then we need to make sure that those resources are fully utilized.
All right, I got a couple real quick. It cost almost 36 million to build, right?
That, that's correct, yes.
Yes, so that's about 800,000 per unit. Okay, and you guys collect roughly about 86,000 a month in rent?
I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I can confirm-
See that, I don't know how you can come to a meeting like this, this important of a meeting, and we've talked about these figures and you can, there's always voids in your answers that I, I think are kind of like basic questions, but I'll, I'll take your answer. But, and that, being almost 36 million dollars, conservatively, that's $360,000 a year in property taxes that aren't coming in, right?
I don't agree with that, Mayor, because we, you can't do a normal property for pro property taxes as staff said. So there's, it's non sequitur. You can't put something on that site that would-
But there is something on that site now, isn't it? So say, say something happened where you did default, you just, you did abandon the building, somebody would probably take over that building and live there.
You, you just said that we weren't probably going to default.
Oh, I know what I said and I know what Mr. Massey said, but it is there. There is something there. There's apartments there. I'm just trying to ask basic questions so the citizens understand that, what's the whole, all the figures. Nobody's getting curbed, nobody's, it's built, the people are in there. I'm just, how does this hurt or help Huntington Beach, the finances for the city of Huntington Beach? Mr. Massey, I'd like you to answer that.
No, it's fine. The, the, the project is, is built. We are going to continue to operate it. We are not asking for anything additional from the city other than approval and recognition of the TEFRA. That's it.
But how does that help or hurt the city of Huntington Beach in its finances or our infrastructure or any of that?
The staff put funds that were earmarked for housing to use and they stepped up and built a project that was difficult to build and that helps the city with a blighted or a project being improved. It also housed people that are needy.
How does that help the finances of our city? At this point, I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to understand this more. I want this, I want to help, but I, I really don't understand how this really, it's built, people are there, nobody's getting curbed. It's really, this is really, when it gets down to it, from what I understand, a jamboree problem, that you're coming to us and asking for us, but we got a fiduciary duty to do what's right to the citizens of Huntington Beach. And that's kind of just where I'm at. I just want to be able to justify getting into this agreement and why you guys can't get maybe another, uh, extension.
Mayor Burns, we're not doing another extension. Number two, we've apologized for being late. I've been on the project for three and a half months. They've apologized during COVID. They're doing their best. Number three, this was always envisioned in all of the documents when this project was built.
That didn't say anything to me.
That's okay.
Yeah. That did not add where the, how it hurts or helps us financially in this city. It doesn't hurt us, from what I understand, it doesn't help us and it doesn't hurt us. I don't have a really convincing message why we should help you out of this bind.
I hear you and I don't know if this will be convincing, but you did ask a question at the last meeting about calls for service and the police department responded that there's been no increase in calls-
I'd be more worried about fire medic, paramedic-
Absolutely. And we can, we can also provide that information and it's extremely minimal. And the only thing that I would add is that all of these folks were a part of your community prior to this development being built.
Eighty-seven percent.
They were on your streets and that costs between 46,000 and 50,000 dollars a year in calls for service, time from your EMTs, time from your fire department, time from your police department. Those folks are now housed. That's an ongoing savings that'll happen every year that we keep that person housed and off of the street. I understand that's not the same as property taxes, but that is a value to the city in terms of savings.
Butch.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for coming. Thank you for presenting. I might be all over the place in my comments, but I won't take too much time. I had a local historian send me a picture a couple days ago of the intersection of Beach Boulevard and Main Street where the Denny's and the Ford Tire Store are currently. This picture is 70 years old and we're not really allowed to put up slides at, at this hearing. So I can just tell you, 70 years ago, it's a big vacant lot. With the exception of Ford Tire and Denny's, it looks exactly the same way it did 70 years ago. So if somebody was going to develop that with market rate units, it would have happened sometime in the last 70 years. It wasn't going to happen. I was the person that the CEO of Jamboree quasi insulted at the grand opening. I went to the grand opening. She apologized to me and I accept it and move on. So I know that's, somebody was wondering who she said that to. I don't like bypassing property taxes any more than any of the other six people up here. We like our property taxes. We rely on our property taxes and our sales taxes to fund a huge portion of the, of the city revenues, I mean, city costs. We tried really, really hard with a, a senior living facility a few months ago that was going to be built right across the street here called the Marisol. And it was a relatively well-capitalized developer out of Chicago and they came and had several meetings with us and they knew that we knew, they knew that we knew that they were a nonprofit and they could take that whole property over there right across the street from City Hall and not pay us one dime of property tax. But they said, there's this program and we know how sensitive you are to giving property away for no property taxes. We're going to do a pilot program, payment in lieu of taxes, and we're going to give you 350,000 bucks a year. My eyes lit up. I said, that's fantastic. Because I knew it was, I, I knew Pelican, Pelican Harbor was, you know, basically wasn't really developing any taxes, you know, property taxes for the city. They were supposed to break ground in May. Have you looked over there lately? Nothing. Guess what? They couldn't get their bonds. They couldn't do it. They couldn't afford it. So now we still have a vacant lot over there with no hope that I've heard that they're going to come back, but I can guarantee you, they're not going to come back with a, with a, a, a offer of $350,000 pilot program to the city. It doesn't, it just doesn't work. So I, while I hate and I understand what my colleagues are talking about, I totally get it. I like what Pelican Harbor is. It's got 43 senior low-income, mostly handicapped, mostly Huntington Beach residents in there. Everybody says, some have asked, well, how does that benefit Huntington Beach? Well, they're not on our streets, they're not being contacted. They're not being contacted by our HTF, our, our homeless task force constantly. They probably use some of the services around there. Maybe they get their tires from Ford Tire or they go eat their eggs over my hammy at Denny's like I do. So I look at this as, it, it's already there. This can't, you know, the Pelican Harbor is already there. It's, I'm, I'm, again, I'm looking at a picture from 1955, I think in my, 70 years ago, still nothing. There was nothing there. The prod, the property and, and, and Councilman McKean and I were in the development business. He still is, I'm retired now. That property was not developable, in my estimation, for anything more, anything more or less than what's there right now. And it's actually serving a purpose. And so I could keep going on, you know.
Can I ask a question to staff? Mayor?
Yeah.
JV, is there any reason why a private developer couldn't have essentially built the exact, exact same framework that they built? Were they given any kind of special privileges or allowances that a private developer wouldn't have gotten in terms of setbacks or zoning?
I think they had some parking considerations. They used, because they were proposing affordable, they can take advantage of some state parking requirements that are less than the city's code for a market rate project.
Okay, so if a-
I think that was the only thing.
If a private developer decided they'll make like a 20% inclusionary rate of, you know, affordable, would they be able to get some of those parking credits? It's just a parking thing? That's it?
I think it was just a parking thing. I'd have to go back and see if there was anything else, but yeah, so depending on what level of affordability or what percentage of affordability, developers are eligible for waivers and development, development standards and also state parking allowances. But you'd have to have a minimum number of affordable housing units, which the site required anyway, because we had identified it for affordable housing as part of our fifth cycle housing element settlement.
I, I guess I just wanted to, you know, strike down this misnomer that this was some type of undevelopable land or things that private developers have just deemed they can't develop on. There's a scarcity of property that we have in-
Let, let Butch finish up.
Yeah. Seventy years vacant lot right there. This is 1955. Somebody would have come in there and developed it. I happen to know that it's a very difficult ingress and egress, and I think you guys know that, for fire. I hate, some people in here might know that I've actually gone on a couple of fire runs in my career and we've actually responded to two calls at Pelican Harbor. They are both false alarms though. Your, your alarm panel there needs help. I just want you to know that. So, but it, it was, it was not easy for the truck to get in and it was doubly hard for that truck to get out. And when you're going to develop, you know, say multifamily apartments, market rate, they look at that kind of stuff and I'm not sure if they would have passed the mustard if we were, you know, if our planning department was looking at it before. I don't know. I just know that you have 20, 22 parking spots right there, right now. You got 43 units. That's a half a parking spot per unit. They would have had to go, I believe, you know, Jennifer, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they would have had to do 50% low income there to be able to get their parking number down to one per unit, right? Isn't usually 1.5 per unit?
Normally it depends on the number of bedrooms, but it's anywhere from 1.5 to 2.5-
Right.
Parking spaces per unit for a market rate. And it sounds like you know the state parking requirements better than I do.
Right. So they would have needed, if they were going to, if they were going to put, you know, regular old apartments in there, they would have needed between, you know, 80 and 120 parking spots, or I should say between 60 and 80 parking spots. And they were only able to squeeze 22 in there, which I think 16 of them are underground, which, when you have to start going subterranean, and I think Councilman McKean will tell you this, the cost of construction gets enormously expensive and that's probably one of the things that scared most regular, you know, developers away from that site. At least that's my opinion.
And I, I think that you make, you know, some, some pretty valid points there. Wild, you've been on two calls for service just to that location alone, which I think is kind of a two-edged sword. I mean, it takes calls for service off the streets, but at the same time, there's calls for service that are going to the location. I, I saw the stats, 23 calls for service in the last 10 months. Over the course of this covenant at that rate, it'll be 2,732 calls for service to that location.
Good thing they got two fire departments that are real close, so, and a couple extra, oh, I'm not going to say they have any ambulances. But it was their, but it was their, it was their, their alarm panel, their fire alarm panel that was malfunctioning. And the second time we went there, we told, we told the property manager, you got to get this fixed. So anyway, that's, that's all I got to say. I will be supporting this. I believe it does provide benefit to Huntington Beach if it's not, you know, the dollars, you know, directly in our, into our general fund. I think it, it, it saves dollars by having these, these individuals off the streets and, and living productive lives. Thank you.
Casey?
Yeah, no, I totally appreciate my colleagues, Councilmember Kennedy, Burns and Williams' dissatisfaction with this business plan as a developer using tax-free financing to build projects. I myself, as I've said many times, am a private sector developer. I would never pursue a project like this, nor will I ever. It goes against my DNA of the free market and taking risk to create a profit and then make money through that project by selling it. This is, the way they make money is through development fees. I would never go through the brain damage of doing a project just for development fees. I would imagine the reason why they can pay their CEOs that money, that amount of money is because they were probably working on a large number of projects that they then obtain developer fees and then can pay those salaries and, and meet their thresholds. Again, these affordable housing projects are razor thin. You're not, you're not, you know, making a spread on your cash flow that you can then sell as a, as a net leased investment. So, so that's one. If, if my colleagues would indulge me just on answering a question, that Pat may answer your question is, and before I ask it though, so, so there's that. So I understand where you guys are coming from if this was like a vacant lot or like a new project coming before us, but it's not. It's built. It's open. It's 100% occupied by very low income seniors with disability. So I totally agree, like, want to have that conversation globally with the state and the tax refinancing. And again, that's abnormal to me on, on new products, projects going forward, but this project's already built. It's already occupied, it's already stabilized. So my question, I think I'll get back to you, Pat, is like, what do we accomplish by voting no? I mean, any one of you guys can answer that question.
I don't know what we accomplished by voting yes other than, I mean, it's easy to build these projects when it's 100% financed on tax dollar business. It's very easy. And that's the part of the problem is where does it stop? Where do we, where do we, again, to borrow a, from the left, why don't they pay their fair share? This is on the taxpayers' back. This is 100% on the, our, our quality of life for our residents are paying the price. And that's why I have a big issue with supporting and encouraging these kind of projects.
Sure. Again, if that was a new project on a vacant lot or again, a new project ground up, this one's not. It's fully stabilized. It's open, it's operating, it's housing very low income seniors with disability. So what do you accomplish by voting no?
No vote would keep the margins, I guess, narrower on their end, whereas a yes vote would open up the margins even more so that they can pay themselves even more. So now we're- even more so that they can pay themselves even more. So, now we're participating and taking more taxpayer money and subsidizing their salaries. I'll give you the numbers. So, one of their top earners, 2023, it's $635,000 they're compensated for the year. One of them standing here today, 526,624. That's just for the year 2023. Did they get a raise in '24? Did they get another raise in '25? So, this thin margins, and we're just scraping by, I don't buy it. It's a $3.2 billion enterprise. And how is it paid for? They're converting taxpayer money into this $3.2 billion enterprise where they have these enriched salaries. They're profiting off of poverty. They've turned a gravy train into these subsidies. So, it's gonna happen whether we vote no or yes. I guess, why would we vote yes and enrich them more? Why would we vote yes and put our name on it when we campaigned to the public saying that we're opposed to government subsidies? We're less government, more capitalism. You don't have to put your name on this right now, and it will go forward. It'll be fine. Or you could put your name on it, and you're blowing wind into their sails and backing it.
I didn't approve this project, but I can answer my own question. So, by voting no, you just increase exponentially the risk profile that they could default. I understand they say they won't, but that's not a guarantee. So, they could default.
By what magnitude is the risk increased?
So, I'm just saying, like, there's no ceiling on it. Like, you guys don't control that. They could default. They lose their tax refinancing. They're telling you they won't. That's not a guarantee. But what is a guarantee is if we vote yes and approve this, it will remain affordable. They guarantee they will not default. Because if they default, wipes out the city's $3 million loan, so that's gone. The risk is the seniors that are the, the most vulnerable in our society that are disabled, with very low income, probably get evicted. And so, by voting yes, you guarantee that does not happen. You also guarantee that we get the concessions. For this, I'm still going, if you don't mind. So, if we vote yes, we guarantee we still get the concessions that staff negotiated for this said TEFR hearing tonight. So, the interest rate on our loan goes from 3% to 5%. That's $5 million more to the city over the life of the loan, which has to go into the home funds, H-O-M-E, all caps, for affordable housing projects. It does not go to the general fund. But again, that's more money. This has all got really tight strings attached, which again, we all disagree with. I would as well on a future project. That's not relative to this one. So, we lose that 3% to 5% interest rate. We lose the $5,000 bucks a year when this, that they were willing to pay. When this was vacant, we were only getting, based on that appraised value, $3,000 a year in property tax. All right? The affordability covenants, I know you guys disagree with going to 16 to 99, but at the end of August, the Five Points Senior Villas, across from Five Points, they were only going to give us a one-year extension on affordability covenants. And we voted then and say, "Hey, can you guys come back and give us more affordability covenants to protect those seniors that are in there?" And we voted on that one in the first meeting in September to go from 1 to 3. So, I don't understand the aversion. I get it from, going from 16 to 99, but the private sector, as Butch said, has already told us this cannot be developed. It's a very small property. It's awkward shape, like a Tetris piece. It's got a flag light going to Beach Boulevard. There's very limited, few properties on Beach Boulevard, one of the busiest, you know, streets in Orange County that has not been developed. The only guy is on the, on the east side, on Slater, because he wants to build high-density housing. He's holding out. I'm sure you guys all know that lot I'm talking about. So, to build, it's underparked. Every private sector development, housing, whatever, it's underparked. The only way to do it is you can do a wrap. So, you build the units around a parking structure. The property's too small to do that. You can't get enough units. So, you go subterranean. Butch touched on it. Subterranean parking is 50, 60, 70,000 dollars per parking space to build. No project will pencil. So, again, the private sector said it can't be developed. So, let's say after 60 years, the affordability covenants burn off. JV, can you kind of walk through that state law that would be triggered once the affordability covenants are set to expire in year 60? What happens?
So, there's a current state law that requires the owner to do some notifications. It's, it's actually a notification law for when you have an affordable covenants that expire to notify all the tenants of a project. In 2024, the state law was strengthened that it basically put some pieces in place so that there would be a greater attempt at preserving affordability at the end of those covenant periods. And so, there's really kind of two choices that you have. When you're about to have expired covenants, you're supposed to, as an owner, a project owner, they have to put the property out to market to affordable housing providers. And they either have to accept one of those offers, which then would preserve the affordability term for another 30 years. And if they decide not to, and they want to let the covenants expire, they have to commit to maintaining the affordability for another five years. So, I guess, no matter what, at the end of the affordability term, whatever it is, at a minimum, there has to be another five years of affordability on this project.
Thank you. So, then at 60 or 99 or whatever, whoever owns this will have to go through that exercise to do whatever they can to keep it affordable. We just went through that exercise at the end of August for Five Points to extend the affordability covenants. But let's say it burns off, and you guys, property tax analysis, some, you know, private sector owner comes in and tries to, I guess, convert it to multifamily. It doesn't park. So, who's gonna live there in a, in a apartment complex that you can't park? So, but I guess that's a possibility. So, there's that, there's that scenario. But I think, Mayor, to answer your question is like, what does this cost us? Yes, on a new project, 100% agree with you guys, like, this is a great conversation to have and this type of business plan. But on this project, voting yes doesn't cost us anything. In fact, it gets us concessions that they've offered, 3 to 5, 5,000 a year. So, 3 to 5% interest rate, 5,000 a year, the affordability covenants. But more importantly, it guarantees that they will not default. It guarantees they will not evict seniors that are very, very low-income with disabilities. I'm not willing to take that risk by voting no, hoping they don't do that. I'd rather take the guarantee and the certainty knowing they won't by voting yes to extend their affordability covenants and expend their TEFR hearing and their tax refinancing. So, I'm a yes on this, without a doubt.
Are you gonna, are you gonna willing to, since it's so guaranteed, would you be willing to put your personal guarantee on that they could never fail?
Me personally?
Yeah. It's guaranteed that they will never fail. You can't say that. It's as guaranteed as they're gonna fail if we don't sign it. That's the thing. They've, they've told us that it will not fail. That's what I'm going with. And that's just, I don't, I think it's a misrepresentation, or you're not listening to what the man has said. And we gotta believe, we gotta filter this. And if he tells us that it's not gonna fail, believe me, it's in his interest to tell us it would. But it's, Gracie, you got?
I'll be very short. I think just about, almost everything's been said. So, that lot's been sitting there vacant for over 70 years. If somebody was going to develop, they would've done it already. I have a question. Who can, I'm not sure who can answer this. How much were we receiving on taxes prior to the development of this land? Do you know?
It's based upon 450,000 that was, when it was sold in, I think, 2006. So, it was like three grand by the time, you know, we, over the years and everything. So, currently, the latest assessment was in 1920, right before it was sold to Jamboree. The value, the amount of taxes only amounted to, I believe, $19,000, which, excuse me, which, let me make sure I get it right, because I don't want to get it wrong.
And while you're pulling that up, is that based off of assessing it off an empty lot?
Yeah, the, the, I'm sorry, that question again.
I was just saying, while you're pulling that up, is that based off of assessing it on an empty lot?
Uh, yeah. Well, they said how many, the dollars that were paid prior to the acquisition by Jamboree was 18,052. That's what their tax, that the property taxes were for 2018, 19, which would approximately be a little over $3,000 for the city's share of the 1% tax levy.
That was prior to the development?
Yeah, that's prior to development.
And now that it's developed, how much would the city be receiving taxes?
As I think stated earlier, because it's an affordable project, we kind of looked at the pilot program that's been talked about regarding the Marisol project. We looked at it, and the assessed valuation, because of the covenants and everything, was around 8.5 million. So, if you use that, and the city taxes the 1%, a little over 1%, the city's rate or share of that at 8.5 million was around $18,000.
Okay. So, we, the majority of us, and I can speak for a majority of us, we're biased towards single-family for-sale homes. We want families to move into Huntington Beach and invest in the community. This lot was not useful for that purpose. So, I do remember while we were campaigning, I dropped off and delivered at least eight to 10 signs to vote for us in that area. So, I reached out to three of those people. I asked them, one of them is adjacent to that property. I said, "How do you feel about this development? And how would you feel if we go ahead and vote to extend this?" She said, "Well, prior to that, it was an empty lot full of garbage and homeless people." She said, "Now it's developed. It's clean. There's security. And it's very quiet." I asked our PD if there was, there were any calls, crime. They said, "No." The other residents said they kept calling for people to just come and clear out the lot, that lot. I asked her, I said, "Would you support us if we go ahead and do this?" She said, "Absolutely." So, we're not breaking our promises. The building is built. There's no more junk. There's no more homeless people. People who were homeless are actually in there now. And I just don't see a reason why we would not support it now that it's there and to even insinuate that we're breaking our promise. No. Everyone knows. Pro-single-family homes, pro-for-sale, but this is here now. And like I said, I'm sensitive to housing and people who are not unsure about whether they're going to have a home the next day or not. It's a horrible feeling, especially the seniors who can't go out there and generate revenue. So, after taking all that into consideration and speaking to our actual voters and explaining the situation, they don't have a problem with it. I don't see why we wouldn't do this.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Vandermark, if I could too, no matter how we vote, it's gonna stay there. You can go no vote, it's still gonna be there. So, we're not voting to try and evict people or take people out. I guess, really, what's in the balance right now is how much margin is the $3.2 billion Jamboree going to make. It's not a question of, are they gonna make? It's how much are they going to make? And so, really, the only thing, it doesn't, the only thing it'll cost us, you know, with a yes vote, I guess essentially would be our integrity, because we wouldn't be doing what we told people we campaigned on, that we, that we would not, you know, be going for government subsidies for low-income housing. But no matter how we vote, this place is gonna stay, and the people are going to stay in there. So, we're not kicking anybody out.
Councilmember Vandermark, the, without the yes tax vote, we are unprofitable, and our city partners are unprofitable. A yes vote will make us all profitable over time together.
Yeah. And part of the reason I actually went out and I called those residents, because they live there. They supported us. They know that we always said we would not push forward with high density. That would affect their communities in a negative way. That's why I asked, what are the police calls? We know, I know, like, the Lucci Apartments and many other buildings, one of them, which one of my stepdaughters lived in, they had tons of calls for crime and cars being burglarized. There aren't any issues, which is why it was really important for me to get the opinion of our supporters. I said, "What do you think? They are perfectly fine with it." I'm not, I don't believe we're going back on our word. We didn't approve this project. As Casey said, if this was brought in front of us, it'd be a totally different conversation. But we are where we are. I've done the research that I felt I needed to do. I've made the phone calls I felt I needed to do, to make. I talked to the people I needed to talk to. And I'm very comfortable with my decision.
So, what's on the table right now, just to be crystal clear, is it's not ending this project or making the project go away. It's going to remain, no matter what. It's just a question in terms of how profitable will it be? There's a version where it goes forward, and it goes forward without your name on it. And there's a version where it goes forward, and it goes forward with your name on it. I would suggest that when we put our names on it, we are violating our integrity in terms of what we said we would do. It does not need us to remain, but you can put energy behind it and widen their margin. And, I mean, I, I keep belaboring the same point. These guys are making a ton of money in compensation, and it's all from taxpayer funds. It all comes from taxpayer funds.
All right.
So, I'll just, I'll just say one thing, because I know that we're kind of like poaching this in a political pot of, of liquid or broth here. There's, there's simply a couple points on the table right now. One thing that is being missed in the cost-benefit analysis, and we talked about this, is that we do have a $3 million loan that's subordinate to three or four layers of funding. In the event that we do, let's just say hypothetically, we all said no, there's the risk of default, which we have no idea how they're gonna operate, especially after this meeting. And in that default situation, an unsecured loan would get tossed out the window by virtue of the first, second, perhaps even the third position. That's a risk. We can talk about it, but we have not brought that risk up. That goes into my calculation. I'm looking at this, maybe I'm not as intelligent as all of you. I'm looking at this from a very simple perspective. 43 housed, 43 unsheltered seniors that are from Huntington Beach housed here right now. We're not spending any more extra money in order to maintain the status of this project. And the risk of perhaps even defaulting on the loan, I think, makes, makes it pretty clear for me.
Yeah, I just, I just reject wholeheartedly Councilmember Williams' assertion that a yes vote is that we're doing this to line the pockets of these developers. It's quite the contrary. We're doing this to a yes vote. It ensures the stability that these seniors will remain in this facility. These affordable housing projects with these capital stacks, they only work, again, I would not do this project. We can debate, you know, this, if a new project like this came forward, the merits of it. But affordable housing projects, there are no profit in them. The way this capital stack works and the cost of construction, it only works with tax refinancing. So, I don't want to take the risk that they may or not default. I'd rather give more surety, I'll retract my guarantee claim, Mr. Mayor. I'd rather give them more surety that they can maintain their tax refinancing, convert their construction loan to permanent financing, maintain their business plan and provide affordable units, and therefore protecting our seniors. I'd much rather be on the record voting for that as a yes vote. And my yes vote, and no way is to line the pockets of the profit margin of affordable housing developers. So, I reject that assertion wholeheartedly.
May I, may I, Mayor?
Want to go before or after Butch?
Well, let me go, because he had a long run there for, he talked a long time. You know, what I'd like to address, what a yes vote does is, number one, it sets a precedent that we're willing to forsake property taxes, not for 60 years, but for, for a century. Sets the table for other developers to come in and ask for the same thing. And if they weren't granted that, they would say, "Why not us? Why them?" Let me ask the applicant a question. What do you do with your proceeds after debt service? Once you've serviced all your debt and all your expenses, there's money left over. What do you do with that money?
So, the, the small amount of cash flow, because the vast majority of the revenue from the operations of the property go to service the existing debt. Of the cash flow that's left over, that's used to pay asset management fee and then to pay the subordinate debt.
Right. So, when you have 115 projects, you said, Mr. Massey?
Yes.
And you've been extremely successful with 114. So, if you have a little hiccup here, you're, you're batting one little hiccup against 115 on the total portfolio, correct?
I mean, not all of our projects are successful.
So, my next question would be, is, we went back and forth in the meeting yesterday. I was curious. You said, you said, you know, in public, there was only $3.7 million worth of outstanding debt. And I called you out on that, and you said, "No, it's five," and Mr., can't even get his name right now, Pete Mitchell. Mr. Mitchell, you both jumped and said, "No, we didn't say that." You did say that. So, I found that disingenuous. I've got it right here on the, on the YouTube.
Yes, I did, I did misspeak in the original hearing.
You were adamant yesterday that you didn't say that. And so was Mr. Mitchell. You said, "No."
So, when, when I first met with you this week, I said I had misspoken. I want to make sure that I'm absolutely clear that the amount was $4.8 million. And I left you documentation that represented that number. So, I did misspeak. I tried to keep tabs on deals, all of our projects, in my head. I made a mistake of not referring to my notes and staff.
Fair enough.
So, I did, I did address that when you and I met.
So, the, the other things that I wanted to address is, yeah, I've been around real estate for a long time. Worked for two very suc- I worked for two very successful real estate investors who have a massive portfolio. It's all private capital, their own capital. They put it at risk. The fact that somebody can say here that because it's vacant now means it's not sellable is the biggest misnomer I've ever heard. That would mean that every vacant property here in Huntington Beach is, hey, it's been vacant since the inception of the city. And if it hasn't been developed, that means it's not developable. So let me ask you a question, Jennifer. An affordable housing builder could have come to this site and not, you know, with some density bonuses, like for example, is the York gonna be parked appropriately? Now, they're not tax exempt. Is that correct?
Let's not talk about projects that are...
Well, it's about the parking. It's about the statement of fact that they're making here that nobody could develop that. Well, an affordable housing builder could do that and take the density bonuses and forsake the parking. So, you know, I just want to be on record accurately. That property could have been sold to anybody else at some point because it hasn't been sold yet would basically be meaning that every vacant lot is not for sale. It's just a statement I want to address. Okay, the other thing I wanted to address that one of my council members made is, if it's hard to get out and you have at-risk seniors there, isn't that counterintuitive when time is of the essence in saving a life that you're gonna have to have a difficult exit plan? So that's just something to contemplate. But what does a yes vote mean? It also supports the fact that the responsible party was not able to meet the deadlines in regards to being responsible to get this TEFRA hearing done. Like I said in the council meeting, she was banging your fist on the table, said, we gotta get it done. I'm not sure if we're gonna get it approved in the first. We might have to have a secondary meeting. The reason this meeting is at 4:00 because we sped it up on behalf of the applicant because if we waited to the next scheduled meeting, we would have been beyond their deadline. They're responsible. So that's why it's at 4:00 today. Out of the goodness of the council, we met special circumstance so we can render a decision. So what does a yes vote mean? It means we're supporting irresponsible behavior on a developer and saying, don't worry about it, you missed the mark, but come back begging. And for all the members here on the dais, I can assure you, the tax creditor, the person that owns the tax credit, there will not be a default. There will not be one senior evicted. Mr. Massey's also said that. And what we're really talking about is if we don't approve it, that Jamboree has to put in a $1 million, write a check for $1 million to bridge the delta. And at this point, because they failed to miss these marks, I mean, I don't think that's too much to ask. So that's all that's at risk. Not one senior will be displaced.
All right, Butch, then.
I'd like to call the question. I think we need to vote on this. This has gone on for three hours.
All right, call the question, please.
Make a motion to adopt the recommended action.
Second.
Well, do we want to substitute with the change in the 99 back to 60?
Are we locking in with the original, the 99 years of Section 8 subsidized? That's what we're signing up our taxpayer to pay for? 99 years now, a century of it? Okay.
If you guys want to make a substitute for 60, go for it. I mean, you know, that's not gonna move the needle for me. It's like, again, we just agreed at the end of September or August to extend affordability covenants. I mean, 60 years, I hope we're all still here. We probably won't be.
Did we agree to extend somebody 39 years or three years?
So make a substitute to take it from 99 to 60?
Yeah, I'd like to make a substitute motion to take it from 99 tax-free years to 60 tax-free years and take the burden off our residents for, save them 39 years of tax burden.
Second.
That was a substitute motion.
Everything else is as recommended, correct? That's the only substitute item, correct? Okay.
Nothing else really to change?
All right.
Okay, so we are voting on the substitute motion. Everything else is recommended. Substitute motion is 99 years substituted to 60 tax-free years.
It's not tax-free, it's affordability covenants.
Affordability.
So the current affordability covenants are 60 years. The concession they gave was extended to 99. The substitute motion takes it back to the original 60 years of affordability covenants.
Okay. Councilman Twining.
Since the only difference is I'll be either 130 years old or 160 years old, I still say yes.
Councilman Kennedy.
Yes.
Councilman, Mayor Protem McKeon.
Yes.
Mayor Burns.
No.
Councilwoman Vandermark.
Yes.
Okay, one moment. May I back up? We're voting on lowering, we're lowering the term from 99 years to 60 years.
Yes.
And all the rest.
And everything else that was as recommended.
Granting the TEFRA, granting the TEFRA to them too.
Yeah, okay, I want to revote. I misunderstood. Actually, I'm a no vote. I'm sorry. Even though I made the motion for the years, no.
I mean, yes.
No. Excuse me for the mishap.
McKeon, yes.
Yes.
Burns, no. Vandermark, yes.
Yes. No.
Motion passes 4-3.
Make a motion adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Okay, there's a first and second adjourned. Next regularly scheduled meeting of the Huntington Beach City Council,